We're set. So it is 6:00 PM, it's a Godfrey City Council workshop.
But Michael would be happy to.
Would I?
I'll give the pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I'll just vote for the pledge allegiance. We'll do that today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we're trying something a little different this year in that at least last year and this year, y'all hadn't seen all of the budgets and all the documents. And so we won't... We did start with this and as we lead you through the process of getting to a final budget, make sure you all understand how we got them where we got them. So with that, I will turn this over to someone who actually knows what she's talking about.
Okay.
And then it's Gilmore. Unfortunately, that would be you.
Do you have someone like that here?
Yes, we do. I will tell you that Sarah has kept me out of jail more than once and has leading us through a great audit by the state auditor who really has found really nothing significant to run. And we're almost through.
Yeah, in fact, they finished up their first thing with the backflaps.
Wow, nice job.
Good job, pretty quick.
Yep.
So the document that was sent out for you guys in your packet, your electronic packet, is basically a very first draft of the budget. It doesn't include everything that will be in the final budget. What it does include is my projection of, my initial projection of revenues for next year and all of the departments' requests for their, basically like their operating budgets for next year. I've also included capital equipment requests, so things like vehicles or furniture or things like that. I have not included big projects, like capital improvement projects. I also haven't included debt service. Those are the two main things that aren't in there so far. All the PIRLs in there, all the FTEs that we are initially moving forward, you guys are in there. We did have to trim a few of the requests, the initial requests back a little bit just because it was just insanely out of, I mean, it's already really out of balance. But we tried to trim things back at least to reasonable possible expectations. Overall, just to kind of go through perspective, the current expense fund where most of our programs are centered in, in this first rendition right now is $630,000 in whole.
Rich.
Yes. So in overall, overall, the whole budget right now is about $500,000 in whole. And I don't have all the funds in here, like I said, debt service. I have general obligation debt in here, but not like all of the water and sewer debt and all of that stuff because those are ins and outs. We collect and then repay, so they're really net zero. So anyway, that's kind of like a big overview of what this is.
So with the $500,000 or $600,000, does that include capital?
Includes the equipment purchases, but not any big projects.
Right, but the $500,000 or $600,000 would include purchasing vehicles and...
Yes.
Right, okay. What's the capital threshold? Is it $5,000, $3,000?
We don't have a formal policy which we will implement, part of the financial policies, but generally speaking, I figure about $5,000.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
And there's going to be an upcoming capital improvement plan book where it has everything, facilities, equipment, you name it, over $5,000 could be determined as like a capital equipment or facility.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So our first requirement by RCW for a budget presentation is to present a council meeting to the full council. Projected, well, this year's revenues where we feel like they're at according to budget and then next year's projected revenues and then department requests. And so that's kind of what I've tried to encapsulate in this first look so you guys have your eyes on it before it comes to the council meeting next week. Now, what I thought we would do is just, I put in the front of the packet everyone's department narratives and I thought maybe we'd just go around and kind of talk about the high points in our departments, things that are maybe different than last year or that historically they've been, new programs that maybe we want to get going next year in our departments, just anything that's kind of notable or out of the ordinary or out of line of what we've done in the past. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just two quick, I'm sorry, a couple of quick questions. Does that amount, the $500,000 or $600,000, does that include the reserve amount of books?
The equipment reserve?
Are the 20%?
This does not have fund balances in it. This is strictly new revenues and new expenses for next year.
So this is not the funding of...
No, it doesn't include any, it doesn't include any fund balance nor any reserve.
No, this doesn't have any funds rolling over. This is just plainly what I see coming in from the outside next year and going out to the outside next year.
Okay, so the funding of reserve would be in addition to that then? So like, in other words, if we, the 20%, we're going to increase that amount, not by 20%, but we need to maintain it at 20% or our target's 20%, is that...
Correct. And we have that right now in the progress list, so we just need to maintain that?
Oh, we do. So that, okay.
Actually, we have more than that.
So that's not a, okay.
We have more than that. We have some that we can spend down until we get to the 20%. And the projection for that amount for 2017 I think was to be around $400,000 or $500,000, I can't remember exactly, but...
So about $500,000 above the 20%?
Yeah, that we kind of have to work with, so we can easily blow through all of that if we wanted to in one year. We're trying, you know, we kind of don't want to.
So when I looked at the attached documents, is that a variance? I was looking at it like this on my computer at home, but is that a variance analysis?
This last page, the summary?
Or the last, yeah, the documents? So in other words, whenever I looked at budgets in the past, it's interesting, it'd be nice to hear from everyone, but what's also nice is to see current year budget variance, to see, in other words, did one department go up $300,000 and one go down?
Yeah, this is a comparison of what we budgeted in each fund last year with what we're budgeting in that fund so far, like what's in there for next year so far.
And of course, this type of accounting, budgeted, you guys are, it's funded accounting versus, and so when you say budget, that's actual, that is, budget can be interplayed with actual, candid actually. That's actual, two actuals in one sentence, but apologize for that. In other words, you say budget, but is that, is that all that was actually spent?
Correct. This is what was budgeted last year, not what we've, or in 2017, not what we've actually spent in 2017.
So you have a column with projections for 2017 compared to the next year's budget?
I will have a projection of the revenues in the presentation next week for where I think our revenues are going to be for 2017.
So are you asking, would you like to see actual so far?
Well, budgeted, for me, budget a lot of times is, this is funded, funded account, you know, funded base, but budgeting can be pie in the sky. The moment you come up with a budget, it's obsolete. I mean, a little, you know, but what did we actually do or what do we anticipate that we're going to do compared to what we want for next year, so?
Yeah, so just kind of a heads up, there is a report that's coming out in your packet and the financial reports are, I think it's through the end of July, so we're about a month behind. But that is a budget to actual summary by fund for 2017.
Right.
So you can see where we were at the end of the first seven months in that report. And then I started doing that every month now with monthly financials, so at least you have a snapshot you can kind of refer to that way.
Does it make sense to do like an annualized?
Well, I do annualize, like, when I bring forward next week, I will have kind of some projected ending fund balances for this year, which will be next year's beginning fund balances.
And then we can then compare that to the budgeted requests for operating at that time then? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I hope that wasn't too confusing.
No, 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 I just, a lot of times budgets are, actual is even, obviously, is going to vary from in the current year and then to see what the variance is from what is requested, what we're actually doing is helpful.
Actually, we're underspending.
Yeah.
So yes, we are underspending so far, but we try to budget conservatively so that if we have a variance in the direction, it's under spending.
Sure, and it's, and we've had vacancies and...
Just philosophically, so you understand, philosophically, Mike and Maya approach for this is, something that's in the budget, we intend to do. So we don't have, there isn't big pots of meat that we stash in the budget to say, oh, well, we'll just align something with this and that way we have money to play with.
Usually when I budget, now the expenditures, I try to nail pretty dead on. If it's in there as an expenditure, we're probably going to spend it.
Right, and that was back to my, yeah.
However, on the revenue side, I try to budget those as the conservative piece. So, you know, I might budget it $10,000 less than I think we're actually going to get and I might do that over a few different accounts or sources of revenue so that I know we have a little bit of a cushion there hopefully. That's where I try to come in conservatively is on the revenue side. If you see an expenditure budgeted, that's pretty much means that, that's what we...
And that was kind of my question. What's interesting about this type of business is that if you're at Andy's Market, you have absolutely no idea what's coming in next month. You have gas, you can go off a trend. Here, we have a pretty, pretty good idea what the tax revenue is going to be as far as property taxes, sales taxes unless something significant happened to the area, but yeah, so, yeah, that's very helpful, thank you.
The areas that I have more career in are like permitting revenues, that sort of thing. Because I, we don't really know. And retail sales tax to some degree is that way too. But our biggest revenue source, which is property tax, that's pretty, pretty darn close to what we're really going to get, so.
Great, thank you.
So I kind of put the department narratives in order of how they come to us through the budget. So that's kind of my thing for how we go through it starting with the expense fund. And I don't know, you wanted to talk about the legislative and administrative or executive budgets first, or?
Yeah, I can provide a brief overview and they have a, it's relatively straightforward. That just has AWC and the Association of Washington Cities, what we pay into that, and then the lobbyist, and then the lobbyist contract. That one can have a little bit of fluctuation right now. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but Trent House, who was the lobbyist, who was appointing after Dave Maston took a job, and Olympia has resigned. So right now, there's going to be a RFP issued through the board as far as who will be the new regional lobbyist. And another puzzle piece to this is they have the city of Walla Walla, they want to have their own separate lobbyists now. So they'll be a little bit of an increase, but we don't think it'll be that much of a fluctuation to it. But everything else pretty much helps study and then I'm trying to, I mean, there's pretty, very early nuts and bolts then and there wasn't anything that really stood out to me there.
Yeah. And I think that there is going to be...
Yeah, everything carried forward year to year, so there's nothing, yeah.
Okay, and then all of this move forward then into finance. And I have a narrative in here, it starts on the first page. I was kind of going to walk through this, just some highlights of what we've done this year. We conducted the wastewater rate study and we did the wastewater rates implementation for 2018. You guys, Mark and I did together the first phase of the city's financial policies and you all adopted those. We have Phase Two coming up as soon as I can get out the numbers a little bit of the budget stuff. We did the RFP for bonding for the water utility for the revenue bonds and those are in the midst of being issued right now. And we basically had a lot of staffing turnover in the finance department. We hired DeSherry, she's been excellent. I think everyone's kind of finally settled into our places and I came back full time June 1st, so we're kind of back on the solid platform again, so. I don't have any extraordinary budget requests for next year for our department. We're just going to continue offering pretty much the services that we're offering as far as payment processing with the credit cards and the express bill pay. We'll be trying to amp up the electronic enrollment for electronic statements enrollment with our customers again by doing more newsletter and website promotion and the Facebook theme probably too. There are some statistics that I wanted to share with you about how that has kind of changed what we're seeing on a monthly basis. So on page two, at the bottom of the graph, I compared late notices and shut-off notices from when we started using express bill pay until now. And our, let's see, we previously... 2016, we issued 2,230 late notices, which was 187 per month. And by the end of July 2017, we were, our average was down to 183 per month. And last year, in 2016, we did 78 shut-off notices on average per month and in 2017, we are down to 66 on average per month. And we have seen those statistics, that we did fine, late notices and shut-off notices have continued to go down since we first implemented express bill pay, allowing our customers to pay online or give their credit card out the window. So anyway, I wanted you guys to see that that is actually making, is having an effect on our collection.
And didn't we vote in a fee for that? Does that come into effect in January or does it already go into effect for shut-off notices?
Oh, yes, and that has been implemented. And that has helped a lot with the shut-offs since we implemented it.
Has it?
We are forming a lot of...
What was that?
If you get a shut-off notice, now you get an extra fee because it costs so much money to go do a shut-off notice just to remind you to pay your bills.
Yeah, it's really reduced the number of shut-offs that they hang.
Good.
Or not shut-offs, well, shut-off orders.
Yeah, the notices.
Yeah, so that was quite impactful too.
Good.
This year, we also separated the clerk's office from the finance department and that has been a lifesaver this year. Lisa's really stepped in and taken over that, those clerk duties, which has been amazing. There's no way I could have done it on top of finance, especially with the status of everything that went on this year. So I thank you guys for allowing that to happen, it means it happened and it's had great results, so.
I thank you as well.
Well, just as a note, that, there wasn't, it was a realignment of function without additional personnel.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, the one thing that I've kind of, I mean, besides getting policies implemented and similar things that have been on my list for a long time, the one new thing that I also am trying to get implemented next year is I'd like to do a paperless accounts payable system. So we're doing paperless payment processing with a third party and we've run into a couple of hitches of trying to make sure that's compliant with RCWs and everything, but we're working on it and accepting that I'd like to implement next year. It would be a no-cost program, so, and it would free up some of one of our accountants' time. So DeSherry would probably end up with a lot more free time to help out with other finance-related duties, which would be really helpful, so. That's just something that hopefully we'll see on the horizon. That's really about it for highlights for my department.
I was just curious, this is presumably an optional program you can opt into rather than like just everyone's getting paperless because I feel like there are certain folks that would object.
It's actually for the city paying Argos.
Oh, I see, okay.
Arguments would go out paperless instead of having the check shots everywhere.
Okay, that does seem like it would make things a lot more...
ACH and payment cards, so like virtual credit cards.
Okay, yeah, good.
All right. But there's some statutory hurdles.
Yeah, there's some hurdles because the banks that, we have to make sure that the virtual payment card companies are using have to be on our state's approved banking jurisdiction list for what governments to be using. And so the service that we are looking at right now, they actually don't approve banks, so we're trying to figure out a way to either manipulate the process so that we're not streaming our card and our money isn't sitting in their bank before it goes out to our vendors or if they want to add another bank because this is going to be an issue for any government in Washington and it completely excludes the whole state of Washington and their customers, so. Yeah, so we're working with them and trying to find a solution.
Just going to ACH, so credit card aside or virtual credit card, the ACH is just a, yeah, phenomenal. People get the money in your account the next working day many times.
Yeah, that wraps up my department. Do you guys have any other questions?
So you don't have any plans for any more personal?
So for, obviously, you guys are pretty involved in what I do over the year. I kind of did a little PowerPoint here on what might be related to budget. So the things that I mainly do that could impact the 2018 budget have to do with the meetings, public records, ordinances and resolutions, and training. So as you guys are fully aware, the council packets have grown. This kind of shows you, they've grown from an average of 104 in 2016 and it was less than that in 2015 because in 2016, the end of 2016, Mike was here and he started doing the updates to the code and all of that. So in our second meeting in July, the council packet was 622 pages long. So that just goes to show the need for the Board Docs program. And we would like to in 2017 add the Board Docs program for all the other committees and commissions. So one of the things that, that actually is, I mean, it's not even a capital rate, it's only $3,000 more. But that would give all of these other commissions and committees the same software system for getting their packets and running the meetings. One big advantage to that also is when those committees bring something forward to the council, all of the documents and everything like that can just be duplicated into your guys' packet. So you can have access to everything that they had in their meeting in order to bring it forward to you guys. So that's a big advantage there. Public records requests, we just implemented the public records policy this year. 2018, I'm going to be really making sure that that follows with everything that's actually happening. I'm going to be keeping in touch with the training and everything on that because these laws are new and they're going to be challenged and all of that and so we'll want to make sure that we keep the public records updated if things get challenged and don't go through the courts. Our ordinances and resolutions, this is one thing that's going to impact the budget in the fact that as we do all of these updates and everything, it has to be codified and published. And so those two things, since we're doing all of this, has, as you can see here from these examples, the cost of the codification and advertising has increased substantially. I mean, we went, 2016, it was $980 to codify all of the ordinances that you guys passed. To date, we're at about $6,500 so far this year. And I don't see that stopping in 2018. Maybe 2019 might be slowing down.
Yeah, 2018, we have the comprehensive plan and the design regulations that need to be updated. The Jive left after then, 2019, it'll drop off.
So in the grand scheme of things, it's not huge budget-wise, but for my little budget, it's big. So training and networking, that helps keep me in touch with all of the rules and laws and everything. And then this is just a list of the other little things that my department's responsible for. Most of them are minimal financial impact. One thing I wanted to talk about is the employee recognition and appreciation program that we started. I've been getting really good feedback from that and it really costs almost nothing, so. And then I assist Sarah and everything when she needs it, but hopefully that program for DeSherry will free up some of my time from that. Any questions about clerk stuff?
Appreciate all you do.
So the employee recognition didn't exist before?
No.
Well, that's just sad.
Trump's been here all year. Like in like six months, I've been here.
That was the big selling point that Heather used to convince me to apply was, we have such a great staff.
But I also told her we have short meetings.
She did. She's like, it's never more than two hours.
Just remember, we designed the meetings to be short. It's not our fault.
Well, I'm impressed with how much we're getting done, so I'm okay with that.
I do. A lot of the other meetings that, you know, from a couple of years ago just seemed like, you know, there wasn't a lot of meat on those bones, you know? Now it feels like we're really doing a lot, so.
Hey, Sean. So as you know, I'm new in the community resource department. There's a couple of things that we'd like to add this year. The, one of them is the AWC workers' comp retro. It's one of AWC's pooling programs that will help us with our L and I plays and provide us with a safety program onsite and they have safety trainings that we can go to. We feel like that would be... We feel like that would be beneficial. It is about $6,000 a year, um, to, um, join, yearly to join the program. But it's a pooling program, so if, um, things go well, then potentially we could get a refund, potentially, if not, then the next year it might be more. So, um, that's one of the increases to the budget. Um, the training, um, was increased a little bit just due to having a new employee. Um, the training is important. I've been to several, um, trainings this year, and every time I learn something that, um, we're not doing, or, you know, we should be doing differently, so I think it's valuable, um, to continue to go to those. Um, there's a slight increase in the wellness budget line. Um, we've implemented a, um, quarterly employee luncheon, um, and so, um, we feel like we need just a little bit more in that budget line to cover that. Um, and then also, our health insurance, um, will be, um, changing. All the, um, unrepresented employees were on the Health First, um, insurance program, and that, um, is going away. So, they'll drop down to the Health First 250, um, so, um, we kind of
So, Sean, can you explain, the Health First was a, you know, deductible?
Cadillac, well, no, yeah, it was a great health insurance plan, no deductible. Um, I've been on both since I came from, you know, the
Elder's okay.
Right, Elder's side, and it's, yeah, it's, it's nice. But it's going away because of the Affordable Care Act, and, um, it's a Cadillac plan, so, um, AWC has decided to no longer offer it. So, we can't even get it anymore. So, um, department heads will drop down to the next best coverage. In a way, it'll be nice, everybody in the city will then be on the same plan. But we would also like to introduce maybe, um, adding the, um, AWC's Long-Term Disability Insurance Program. Some value will benefit for the employees. It runs about $875 a month, or $10,000 a year. And it might go a long way to, um, I don't know, making the employees who have to bump down feel better about that. I don't know if that's important or not, but it is a good value, and lots of, um, employers do offer that benefit, it's a benefit that we offer.
It's $8.75?
$875 a month.
For all of them?
Everyone, yes, everyone.
Yeah, that's very reasonable.
Yeah. In the grand scheme of things, it ends up being almost a wash, because with the Health First 250, the, what we're paying on that dips a little bit since it's no longer a Cadillac plan.
That's my question, so the overall healthcare expense is going?
It'll probably go up a little bit, because, because the cost of healthcare in general is increasing.
But it's volatile.
But, but my whole point is, let's say hypothetically, with that Cadillac plan still does exist, you have that, and then plus the increase on top of that, so.
I think we're looking at like, like a 9% was up the last estimate on our health insurance increase. Seven to nine, seven, yeah.
They were saying low, and it's just sevenish.
So.
So the LTD is, did directors have that before? So no one had it, and now it can be offered for?
Everyone.
Wow.
And you have to offer it, it's all or none. We could, we need to look into a little bit, because the police department has something like that, so maybe we can do it department, you know?
So, will this be a process of deducting it from their check?
It's employer-paid.
Well, it'll be deducted from their check and then reimbursed to the employee. You, if you do that, then the benefits are not taxable. I think it's pretty standard, but you may want
Oh.
So in other words, if you were disabled, your benefits would be non-federal taxable.
Right.
So you may want to look at
I will, thank you.
So it's, it's an in-and-out type of a thing, and, you know, as far as the deduction per employee.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Short-term disability? For the disability?
A lot of places are moving to short-term, and they used to have like an extended illness bank or something, and so a lot of places are moving away from that, going to a very limited pool, and then actually buying a re, like an insurance, a separate policy to give us for short-term. I don't know where we're, yeah. Anyway, that's
We, we have a short-term disability claim available through AFLAC if we, if we really want to invest in that, but we don't offer anything from the city, which is why.
Why do you have it, why has a third disability?
It wasn't to just be
Well, there's, there's accrued vacation time, is there accrued sick time?
Yeah.
So there's accrued sick time, which is like a short-term?
Yeah, I guess I just always have worked places where like a short-term disability is, a short-term is usually provided by the employer, like up to a certain percentage of your income, or it could be backwoods, and then long-term disabilities, something that you could buy into over and above two times your salary, and then it's calculated on your age and all kinds of other stuff, but it's like pennies on what you get if you just do it.
I've never, I've never worked, I've seen this short.
And then like a short-term disability, like when I was at Key, it was, I was salaried, so it was like if something happened to me, I'd recover, I'd get paid starting the next day for the hourly, gotta wait two weeks, which didn't make sense. But there's just these different levels, but there's always something that's, a portion of it, I think it's one or two times your salary, provided by the employer everywhere I work, I thought everyone did, and then you could buy
I haven't seen that. We, we had a sick time that you accrued, so you could get up to a thousand hours.
Have any disability, like, you die, okay, you get up?
Well, it's insurance, it's life insurance.
Right, but I, I've almost worked for a while.
So, we, 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 no.
So I like this.
The staff, the staff accrues
But don't die.
Staff accrues sick time, they can, we don't have, we don't have an option of living on sick time accrual.
Yeah.
And, and if, if someone, for whatever reason, runs out of sick time, the option is available for other staff members to donate.
Yeah.
So, I'll pick, I'll pick on Sarah, I mean, uh, Sarah's pretty, was pretty well-covered in spite of a fairly difficult day and injury, basically.
Thanks to the generosity of others. And, um, that was actually what made me start thinking about the long-term disability and bringing that forward, because
Some other people donated their time to you?
Yeah, Amy donated theirs.
So now, vacation time is always payable to an employee if they were terminated or, well, yeah, or they resigned.
Exactly.
Up to
Up to 240.
Yeah, 240.
Right, we have a cap.
Sick time is not payable if they resign?
Um, in our current policy manual, um, off the top of my head, might not even remember, it's something about so many hours, and it's a very small amount if you retire with so many years of service, but it's a very limited amount.
$120,000?
Yeah, yeah. And it's not when you leave, it's just if you retire with a certain amount of years, but other than that, no, sick leave is not paid.
Typically, it's not, yeah.
We do get to cash out 40 hours of sick leave every year.
Sure.
But, um, so, um, anyway, that's something that we put in this rendition of the budget.
That's very good, yeah, all right. Sleep at night.
And that's pretty much all I have. Oh, sorry.
I would just make one suggestion on a wellness plan.
Mm-hmm.
It, my experience as an employee has been that they are much better accepted if they are incentivized, as opposed to you're punished for not being in it. So for example, places that are like, okay, if you do our wellness program, you get this or that or whatever, um, people are like, "Yay, this is really cool." But like, some places, it's like, um, "We're doubling your insurance, and if you do our wellness program, we'll, we'll continue to pay that part." And everybody's really upset about it, and really begrudges it, and only does the absolute least that they can do to qualify.
Right, and ours is fairly voluntary if they, we do have some things, because I failed to mention that, um, if we jump through all the hoops, we get a 2% discount with our insurance from, you know, so, um, there is a small amount of required things, but mostly it's just, you know, if people want to save a damn
But there's some incentives along with participation.
There are, yeah.
Vacations, bicycles, gift cards.
Yeah, incentives are way better than punitive when it comes to wellness. Because it's way, you know, people are like, "I did my 6,000 steps, I ain't moving."
Well, ours just, just isn't all about like exercise and, you know, weight loss or whatever. It's about, you know, I mean, like, we consider our, um, quarterly get-togethers as part of the wellness program, because it's an opportunity for us to get together, get to know people that we don't, in our, you know, city that we don't see on a day-to-day basis and visit a little, and it's just
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, oh yeah, I forgot our office talk. We decided that as a wellness. Yes.
Is the office talk?
Yes, it's part of the new wellness program.
It's not Harvey?
No.
We refuse to scratch him behind the ear.
You don't want to get fleas again, is that what this is?
Sarah, she has a doctorate charge, medication quite frequent?
Yes, she had eye surgery, so she has lots of eye drops, she has seven days a day, so gracious to have her showing me.
Everybody gets to scratch and hold off, and everybody's blood pressure's down.
Yes, so, there you go. Any other questions?
Chief, you're up. All right. Okay, so, uh, I'm also new to wellness, this is fun and exciting. Uh, the police department is in need of several budget increases for 2018, including the addition of four new officers, new fleet vehicles, and the creation of a lieutenant's position to assist me with administrative duties. We're also asking for a position to handle three areas of responsibility, which include animal control, evidence, and code enforcement. So it'd be a three animal control, three evidence, third code enforcement. Uh, and we also have a need for uniforms and equipment, and information technology improvements. Uh, some special projects, one of the special projects we're looking at are take-home vehicles. Currently, officers utilize a pool vehicle for conducting patrol, whereas officers arrive at work and check out a vehicle, studies have shown, and actual cost savings to agencies to assign take-home vehicles. There's a great 2004 cost-benefit analysis by the city of Tacoma. Um, assigned vehicles add an extrinsic value to officers' decisions on retention and recruitment. Many Africans choose departments who have an assigned vehicle program. Assigned vehicles add to an officer's morale since the vehicle's in a workstation. Assigned vehicles also add professionalism and increase consistency of familiarity for equipment placement and personal responsibility. And finally, assigned vehicles add the security, uh, to our community and our parking unit and our neighborhood. So, um, our recommendation is to acquire used patrol vehicles, uh, from the state in order to implement the assigned vehicle program, uh, through, through help, uh, through the state surplus vehicles and municipalities and organizations, often buy from them, so vehicles, uh, eventually will then, can be replaced through, uh, attrition. The second request is an update and replace patrol car radios. Uh, currently, the existing mobile radios installed within patrol cars are obsolete and unserviceable. Now, they all work right now, but there are, Jeff tells me there's no parts to replace them if they break down, so, um, we don't have to replace all of them at once, we found out, so, but we do need to, uh, probably start replacing at least one, maybe one year in a row, so. Um, other special equipment needs, two-factor authentication for mobile data terminals, uh, to remain CGS compliant. The police department must install two-factor authentication for our mobile data terminals. This is done with software used by all the other law enforcement agencies in the state of Washington, including the Walwal and the sheriff's office. The software is called Net Motion, and the estimated cost for, uh, our staff is about Uh, we'd also like to move to a Class A uniform, that is a dress uniform. Uh, the image as we, as an agency have, it's predicted in large part on the image we projected visually. Uh, with that in mind, officers are in need of true Class A uniform. Officers are in need of a pressed trouser and a cover, which is a hat. Our existing long-sleeve shirt will be used to save money, and the estimated cost for the pants and the cover for all of our officers is $58,000. Uh, in reference to the Class B uniform, officers have asked for a cooler uniform option during the summer months. Turns out, it's got, it gets hot here once in a while.
Yeah, it's that too.
So, uh, officers are wearing their winter jumpsuits, which has insulation for cold climates. Officers have expressed a desire to have a summer jumpsuit. Um, so the jump, summer jumpsuit, or, the winter jumpsuits are $650, the summer ones are $450, uh, but with that $450 jumpsuit, uh, we say the last four to five years, we just wouldn't purchase the old Class B uniform. So, cost savings would be a option. Another option is the uniform, the eyewear, with the external vest, but they wouldn't get both, they'd have to choose a summer jumpsuit or the top.
It sounds like a wellness issue.
Yeah, it is, it really is. It's, uh, it's pretty hot with the weather on. We're in need of a new tactical shield. The current shield issued to the police department was purchased in the 70s, and is no longer compliant, as you can imagine. The police department is in need of a, a shield that will be Level 3, and be used for like an active shooter situation, a barricaded subject, a recovery of an officer. Estimated cost for a Type 3 basic shield is $3,000. Uh, a detective vehicle, um, Detective Mayment currently drives an old patrol car, and it's kind of hard to sneak around and walk, and, and a lot of times, he's, he's working with a young lady right now who's being stalked, and he's installing some cameras around the house, and so he can't, he's using his personal car, because he can't pull up in his patrol car, because the perpetrator will see him there and get suspicious. So, long story short, we'd like to get Roger a true detective vehicle, and again, we thought we could purchase a used vehicle through state surplus to fill that need. Uh, trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible in all of this. With the animal control slash evidence, uh, slash, um, code enforcement officer, we would also need to purchase a new vehicle. Uh, a new vehicle with canopy is probably around $30,000, however, we, we could probably acquire one of those also through state surplus for a much reduced cost. I'm guessing around $10,000 for a new vehicle, so. So, let's talk new officers. We recently had, and we'll talk about this more another time, but we recently had an audit by the WASPIC. Uh, the audit's called, uh, WASPIC is, it's the Washington Sheriff's Police Association, and, uh, they basically sanction best practices, they assign accreditation to law enforcement agencies, um, and they have a program called Loan Executive Management Assistance Program, which is an audit where they bring in loan executives from high-functioning accredited agencies around the state, to come and look at the internal workings of our police department. And there's 14 accreditation steps that we go through, different categories, and they, they, they have their measurements of what is required, they evaluate what we do, um, and then they give recommendations on what needs to be improved. That's anywhere from hair-on-fire fixes like right now to, hey, you need to work towards this to get accreditation. So, we have a little bit of both in those, as you can imagine. So, um, it's, I thank the mayor for allowing us to do that, because it's probably, and Mike, it's probably one of the best things we could have ever done for a law enforcement agency, and it's, it's, it's revealing. Um, and I'm going to, I just mentioned to speak to the staffing, since that's what we're on. Um, the audit states staffing for CPPD is a major concern for the LEAP team. The report continues stating, "It is clear that CPPD has insufficient staffing to provide one officer street coverage on a 24/7 basis. This conclusion does not begin to broach the topics of officer safety and a 24-hour supervision that is customary and accepted by most Washington police agencies." From page 15 of the LEAP. Um, and I think at some point, we're going to present the LEAP findings to the city council at another time, so we'll be looking forward to doing that. I know Mike, the mayor, and I, I think, are meeting tomorrow to go over it. We just got it, so, it's been a very interesting, so, um, College Place Police Department has been running low minimum staffing for several years. It's part of our culture here, and, uh, we need to change that. Many studies exist to, in regards to police allocation models, however, our minimum staffing should allow at a minimum two officers per shift. Currently, our officers work independently and rely on other agents for backup and assistance. This is a burden to other departments and reduces the safety of our officers. This is also contributed to officers laddering to other departments. Our current staffing includes two sergeants, seven patrol officers, and one detective. Uh, in order to achieve two officers per shift, we'll need to recruit and train seven additional officers. Having said that, we've just hired two officers. Both of those, however, will replace attrition, so one is replacing the SRO position, and the other one is replacing Officer Bill Kelly. Um, and incidentally, Bill Kelly, to help us with coverage, because Bill Kelly's Bill Kelly, he's going to, he was going to retire in November, he's going to stay until April, until the new guy gets out of the academy.
Wow.
That's the kind of guy he is.
Forty-four years?
Yeah, pretty amazing.
He's just trying to keep this apart.
He's just trying to keep this apart.
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay. He's still full of pissy vinegar, so I'm happy with it, so. Yeah, command staff. Other personnel needs include adding a lieutenant or a captain position to assist with administrative demands associated with the growing department. The agency is in need of operational leadership under the direction of me to help oversee programs and personnel to allow the chief to focus on strategic plans and policy. The captain lieutenant position would focus on tactical mission of the agency. Most departments, including departments our size, have typically an assistant. The Limited Commission FTE, which would be the Animal Control Code Enforcement Evidence Processing, is in need to assist our agency's growing needs. Each area of discipline would be divided into one-third. We, a big finding in the audit is we are way behind on our evidence. We have a lot of property that we have to get rid of, to a point of almost liability to us, and I can say that we are already working aggressively towards getting rid of that. Roger Maitman is our detective, but he's also working on our evidence, and he's just too busy as a detective to be doing both. He just can't do it satisfactorily. The majority of our issues are because of staffing. Records, evidence, everything is a result of not enough people to do the job. And training. New recruits must attend a basic law enforcement caddy, believe him. It consists of 18 weeks of training. This training must be started with six months of hire, and the cost is roughly $3,200 per student. Uniform and equipment costs are roughly $6,500 per student. And then they must, upon graduation, pass a 12-week field training program under the supervision of a field training officer, which leads me to, we need to identify a new field training officer, in which we are already, because we're so desperate for one, we're actually already moving ahead on this early. So Tanner Harris is going to be going to field training officer school. The Lexipol manual. Lexipol is our policy manual. That's the policy manual that most law enforcement agencies across the state of Washington use. The, there's an increase in the fee on the Lexipol manual this year, and one of the recommendations of the LEAP was to also include daily training bulletins, which, right now, there's a 50% special, which will be for a year. So it'll be additional cost of $1,267 per year. What that will do is apply policy to practice, so it'll be scenario-driven, so that the officers are able to read the policy, understand the policy by applying it to a scenario in which will help them better understand the policy and best practice. And one of the things that we're trying to do as an organization, as a law enforcement organization for the city, is seek accreditation. Every law enforcement agency should be seeking accreditation. That shows our community that we're doing things right, and that's our ultimate goal, and that is also a motivator for a lot of these things. Care and custody of arrestees. The city of Collis Place has contract with Walla Walla can corrections to hold arrestees. The cost of holding these prisoners over the last year has gone down as a result of fewer arrests, and so that is, you know, obviously with some of the drug-related arrests, but I've also asked the officers not to arrest on some of the suspended. So if any time we can request charges to be filed and given court date, we're trying to use that instead of taking people to jail, because what's, what we're finding is we're paying a jail fee, and these people are just getting processed and turned around, we're still have to pay the fees, so it's not really cost-effective to the city to do that. There are times if they're habitual traffic offenders, however, that I'm still asking the officers to book them into jail. So some significant cost savings, but a real reason for our cost savings is because we went down from 10 officers to really four officers for most of the year, so not much going on. So our budget dropped from $85,000 to $25,000 in 2017. So a significant change. Priorities for the department, staffing, retention to increase and maintain the number of officers, supervision, supervisors, and support staff. Training needs to continue to be a priority to ensure officers are proficient, safe, and in compliance with the state's mandatory training requirements. In July 2017, the department brought in WASPIC to do the LEAP, which we talked about. Two-factor authentication, we must gain compliance with CGS requirements, or we can lose our software ability to run data and things like that if we don't comply with that. And records and property destruction, we need to get rid of some property, and we're already making leaps and bounds on that. And one of the reasons why we've been able to make leaps and bounds is because of our intern, and she's just been doing a phenomenal job helping us get that done. So final summary, most of the increases in the proposed 2018 budget are a result of additional resources, training, equipment, and personnel needs for a growing agency. The detective figures for 2018 have been largely based on the prior budget history and the priority and challenges in the county. Okay, questions?
Are you able to accept funding from outside sources to, like, add officers and things like that?
Yeah, there's grants out there that are available for agencies, some of which we don't qualify for. Some of them are, because we live in a great community, some of them are crime-driven, so violent crime-driven specifically, which we did not qualify for.
Thank goodness.
Right.
Well, here's my thought, although I don't know how much of this I'm supposed to share, so, you know, you just heard it in the wind. So apparently, the constituents of Walla Walla University are quite concerned that their students potentially have access to drugs, and there's rumors of drug.
I'm shocked.
Yes. And there's rumors of drug houses right around campus and things like that, and it's starting to be quite a large concern. Our actual, as near as we can tell from our counseling department, our actual rate of drug use is much lower than most universities, but it's not zero. Probably not shocking to anyone. But given the reputation issues, it seems like it might be a good time to talk to the university about potentially helping to fund an officer or two to approach drug issues.
Mr. Zetelom and I have been conspiring.
Good.
We're working on getting a good cross sample of statistics across all departments, and the main reason for this is a concept really from where I went to school at, it's called PILT.
Yes, I'm like, why don't we pay PILT?
And what that is, is payment in lieu of taxes. And what that was, is like when I went to school at University of Illinois, they're being in Champaign, we paid our tuition. It was even for low-income students, and part of scholarships cover that you basically had a community impact fee. So I had to pay about $20 fee as City of Urbana in Champaign, and went to police and fire services and things like that because there was a disproportionate impact on the community services. And we're collecting the statistics to back it up as far as impact on city services, but at least my viewpoint on it is if University of Illinois has a very disproportionate share of low-income students can foot that, I don't really give a thought that issue would be here, so.
Well, and that potentially, I would suggest you might want to consider talking to them specifically about the drug issue, because we talked about this in faculty meeting, there was a lot of pushback to administration of, well, have you talked to the police department about this? And they're like, well, we're going to. So I would.
They are. That might be the.
They're semi-desperate for something that they can put a news release out about, so if they, if you're like, hey, how about if you pay for a couple years and then we'll work out this PILT thing for the long term, then they could put out a big news release saying, hey, look at what we're doing to keep your poor little innocent snowflake safe.
So let me speak to a couple of those.
Sorry. Don't say that a lot.
Let me speak to a couple of those items. I am meeting with the vice president, I believe the president, for dinner. They invited us actually to meet with them on the, what I said, the 2nd or the 3rd of October.
Good. Yeah, we have a new vice president of student affairs that would be responsible for this.
We're having dinner, and we're going to meet, and we're going to discuss issues related to campus employees and our relationships, so, which is exciting. Yes, our community has a drug problem. I can tell you that for a fact. Sunday night, we had two DUI accidents, and both of them were under the influence of methamphetamine. Our school, our high school, the state health survey indicates that we are higher than normal levels of students using opiates and marijuana. Opiates is heroin, so, pretty sad. So if they're in our high school, I promise you they're in the college. We also know of a couple illegal grow operations in the city that we're currently dealing with, so it's a problem.
And I don't mean to belittle the concern.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I think it's a good potential opportunity to use the optics to get some serious help with that concern.
And we jump on every little grant there is. We just secured a $3,400 grant, we're in the process of securing a $3,400 overtime grant for traffic safety. We were able to get some money back on some overtime expenditures from the state on a grant this year. I'm applying for a wild horse grant for some of our IT needs here, so, I mean, any time an opportunity comes forward, we're jumping on it. We just don't always qualify, or sometimes don't get it.
Right.
17%, the city is non-taxable.
This is when I take my engineering students around and show them things, I'm like, this is what happens to a city when a huge chunk of the city is non-taxable. You've got to pay for services. You get what you pay for.
We have a plan?
Good. I just wanted to give you a little intelligence about what's going on on the other side.
It's not tactical yet, but within the next year or so, it may be tactical.
Good.
So of the items that you discussed, additional patrol policemen, cars, and whatnot, how much of that is in the budget right now?
So, as far as additional positions that are new for 2018 in his department, the SRO, which has started currently already, that's a new addition. The code enforcement, animal control, evidence, student FTE, that's a full-time FD, that's a number two. We were only able to put in one additional patrol. So he requested seven total, we're only adding three more to the SRO, and, you know, our budget's severely offset it, so if we could do something like that, that would really do help.
So to the shared police officer with the high school.
Yeah.
Is that?
They pay 50%.
And so, right.
And that officer, they go on off-season to patrol.
So, so they're paying 50%, but the assumption is that that officer, I think I talked about this the other day, but, so the assumption is that is a full-time FD at the school, so he's not half-school and half-hoping, you guys, but he can be called upon in an emergency?
A prime example of that today is when the shooting happened in Walla Walla, he left the school and responded, so, and then we pulled him off and he wasn't back, but that's what he does, and that's, the school just is 100% supportive of that.
Sure, I may be behind. Do you now have him in place?
We did because Bill Kelly was able, because Bill Kelly committed the statement to April, we were able to get him in.
Fantastic, I didn't let you, I may have missed that, but.
Yeah, no, we were on the fence, we were, start it now or next year, and we were able to start it.
So that was a case where you've got somebody at the school, but you're able to say, you know, all hands on deck, and, yeah, okay.
It's, in the long run, the 50% that we pay is more than paying off.
It is.
It's in prevention.
So some of these other positions, and I'm speaking for ignorance right now, so, truly, but some of these other, like animal control, are those, well, they're not, are they able to help with administrative duties? I'm not talking about decisions, but answering phones, helping out in other areas, are they able to cross-train at all to assist you, or?
Potentially, but they're going to be so busy.
Okay.
Doing that job, because we're, really, they're taking three different positions and combining into one person.
Okay.
So, you know, we average 10, 12 ala calls a month. They take, anytime you get an ala call, it takes three or four hours, so it's a good time of your day. The code enforcement, frankly, he'll probably spend 50% of his time doing code enforcement and then the rest of the time doing the other duties.
And there's some reimbursement associated code enforcement along.
Yeah, so, I mean, code enforcement right now is taking a significant amount of our time. They're making great gains with it.
So that, that takes the pressure off some other areas, but you still don't have the double coverage 24, that's back to you.
Yeah.
It takes seven people to put up a position with 50%.
And some of the code enforcement we're doing is overtime. We're doing FCS, we're doing things, we're doing whatever we can, and we should get them.
So, Heather was first.
I just have two questions. Who is this SRO?
Joey Leguiz.
Oh, oh, cool. The dancer.
We have the dancer.
What would happen, have you looked at the change in, if you no longer did as much overtime as you're doing right now, how would that factor in toward salary?
We haven't, we've talked about that. Michael and I have talked about that. We're not at the point where we're going to stay at, we're trying to evaluate what that is, because what happened last year, you know, we had people retire, we had two people leave to go to the sheriff's office, so most of it is backflip. And Sean did a amazing job by helping us with a grant to get reimbursed for a lot of that overtime backflip, so now we're able to apply that back into the agency, which is fantastic. But we'll continue to look at that. And, you know, frankly, there's some management decisions that are now being put into place to eliminate unnecessary overtime, so there's a lot of things that we're doing, leaning some things out, and we're making great progress just by complying with those little principles, so.
Which I've probably been watching too much TV, but the ability in the state of Washington to seize vehicles, is that, is that practical? Is it correct?
It can be, if you, for instance, get a narcotics arrest out of a vehicle, but here's the catch. You have to show intent, delivery, you have to show that you're using that vehicle to sell, for instance, or transport narcotics for the use of sales, and then the vehicle has to be worth through value of what it's going to cost you to process that because it's not cheap. So that includes towing, impound, and then the court fees associated with seizing that vehicle. So I've been involved in a couple of legal seizures over the years. It's a lot of work, so, I mean, if you stop a Porsche now, like, we're going to do everything we can to seize that vehicle. And, you know, and that's the sad thing, but it's just, it doesn't, it costs us money if you go to seize a Pinto.
I got a, I got kind of few, mostly points of clarification. So you're requesting kind of these new radios, and it seems like within the last year, we kind of had some sort of radio update.
Portables.
Portables, okay, so these are for the patrol cars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so stay in there. As far as the animal control vehicle requesting, the officer for that, I was just kind of curious how that interfaces with Blue Mountain Main Society, because we did do some sort of contract with them.
Yeah.
Mike.
Okay, I'll chime in there. With the Blue Mountain Human Main Society, that contract, for most part, is pretty much terminated, because we agreed upon a set value and their perception, or I don't even know what you'd call it, but.
Army.
You know, when you go into a car dealer.
And they say, boy, do I have a deal for you.
Yeah, well, we, what we did is we developed a contract that said, we're going to pay you this much, and you're going to be both the sheltering of animals and then provide this animal control officer. X dollars a month. The first, at the end of the first month, we got a bill that reflected the money that was in the new contract and a bill that reflected the money in the old contract, in spite of the fact that the new contract says you're going to do this for this amount of money. And, I mean, we spent a lot of time with the Blue Mountain Human Society, but they said, well, that's not what we meant, we, this is in addition to. I'm just, just straight to their president and their board, you did a bait and switch on us, we're not paying it. Here's the contract you signed, did you read it?
Keep in mind, both services were actually in the title of the contract, and there's a, yeah, and there's a provision that says it supersedes the whole contract, too.
So we terminated the services of the Blue Mountain Main Society.
Boy, I had a nerve, didn't I?
Oh, well, I can, this was done in such bad faith, that I have, if we could get shelter in someplace else, I would do it, because I think that on purpose, trying to build up their funds to build their expanded new shelter, they thought. to build up their funds to build their expanded new shelter, they thought they could screw with the little city. Because they're the only game in town. And while they are the only game in town, we actually started talking to the Lebanoner, including Ross and Ray. Can you show shelter boards?
And those conversations are ongoing.
Okay.
I mean, we gave them all of the license fees in addition to the monthly charge. We gave them, they got all of the fees for housing the animals.
The fines to associate.
And the fines. It all went to them, plus the money, and they still played this silly game. And I considered it in such bad faith.
Well, thanks for the update. From the wind from the north versus the wind from the east over here.
Yeah, no, it was bad. And we terminated.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for finding us the best service possible. I mean that, like, for bringing it back here, not for, anyway. Anyway, the last question I had here was, like, just curious about some of the benefits of accreditation. You mentioned, like, having the, you know, kind of civilians know, like, that we're doing our job correctly here in the police department. Just, can you talk a little more of that?
Yeah, so, what accreditation does is, it applies best practice to the work that we're doing. And that, not only is it good for morale, and it shows that our police department is doing things right, but it also shows the community that your police department is doing things right. So, when they're called into question, any type of question that might arise in an incident, the officers are trained by best standards. Our policies are best standards, and we've been audited by outside agencies that say, yes, these, this agency is performing at a level, extremely high level, recognized, so much so that they give you an accreditation stamp. So, it's, to get accredited, it's like $1,200.
It's not too bad.
It's not too bad. What it does is it installs pride in the organization, and installs pride in the city. And I come from an accredited agency, and I think that every chief in the state of Washington should be seeking accreditation, and that's ultimately what everybody's goal is.
Okay. Hopefully, we can integrate some of the, when it does happen, into the process of that. Someone is so fired.
Walla Walla's been going through the accreditation process for the last three years, and they're hoping to reach accreditation this spring.
Something to put on the Facebook page, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Well, the bigger issue around accreditation system dramatically, because the standards are put in place, it dramatically reduces the liability involved in...
Some added benefits.
In dealing with the administrative piece of policing.
Yeah, it really does. I mean, it just, it ensures that we have best practices all across the board. I mentioned the 14 different areas of accreditation.
Sounds pretty thorough.
It's extremely thorough, and it's extremely hard. That's why not every agency in the state of Washington has that. So, it could take us two years, it could take us five years, but we're gonna do everything we can to work towards that.
Awesome. Keep it up.
Thank you for letting me come here tonight and speak. I'm hoping I'm next with that introduction. Let me give you a little background about the fire department and where we are today. We always try and maintain a volunteer staff, supported by paid personnel at the fire department, of about 40 members. We need that many volunteers in order to get enough people on scene at an emergency, at any time, day or night, to accomplish our tasks. We currently are not at 40 members. We're at about 30, 33 members, somewhere in there. And we struggle, like any other volunteer fire agency, to maintain volunteer membership. There are a lot of outside influences constantly pulling on volunteers to have them do other things, you know, like family life.
How dare they?
Jobs, you know, all those things that we, in our lives, take for granted, is very difficult for a volunteer to balance. Because what, our, our needs at the fire department are increasing every year. And that's a time commitment, that's a training commitment. And so, the national average to have a volunteer firefighter is about four and a half years. Right now, we are keeping a volunteer about two, two and a half years, right in there. So, if you can imagine the amount of effort and the amount of money we spend to train somebody up that then gets married, and, you know, God bless them, we hope that happens to most people. Some people it should never happen to. So, we're constantly having this flux of volunteers coming in and going out, and we try and support that with the three of us, myself and my two firefighters that have responsibilities in certain areas. In 1997, we hired a training officer position, and that was me. I was the second paid person ever for the city of College Place Fire Department. And we maintained that training officer position until 2008. That went away when, you know, the economic downturn occurred, and we've not filled that position. And so, the three of us have split that workload to try and do that training. And when I say training officer, they do, they do more than training. They do recruitment. They help with the mentoring of the young people that live upstairs, and really help take a lot of the workload off. So, training for volunteers is evenings and weekends, and city meetings are daytime and evenings. So, a lot of days start at 7:00 in the morning for the staff, and we're there till 9:00 at night. And that's hard on our own families, and we'd like to stay married. Most of us, I think. I would. It's a lot cheaper.
Talk to your wife about that.
And so, we have in the, in the budget, once again, looking for a training officer position. This will be the third time I've requested this position, and it has not been fully funded up until this year. Hopefully, we're going, we're gonna go this year and hire that position. If we looked at a national average of what, what should a fire department have, paid staff versus just solely based on population. So, it doesn't look at our community as, we don't have enough retail, or we don't have enough tax to support. But the national average is nine paid, or sorry, one paid person for every thousand people you protect. So, we have about 9,000 people. The goal someday, and I totally understand the city can't support it today, that we should be looking towards striving to that end. The fire service, from a public safety standpoint, is extremely expensive. All of our equipment is expensive. Everything we write around it is expensive. If it has the logo NFPA, which means No Free Publication Association, no, that's not what it means. It means National Fire Publication Association. They, if that stamp is on something, the price is higher. Because it has to be UL-listed, and it has to be this, and it has to be that.
It expires.
And it expires all the time. So, everything we buy is expensive. The clothes we put on a firefighter is $2,200 a person, and they expire every 10 years, whether you used them or not. Everything has a shelf life, because the people who sit on committees are the vendors, and they're trying to sell their product over and over and over. So, so, number one thing we're looking for for next year is that training officer position. The other two things that are really, or the other three things that are on the list are, we need to increase the stipends for our volunteers. Currently, the area is paying somewhere between $10 and $12 a call. We're paying $2. So, as an incentive to say, hey, come out to this fire. I'm not gonna pay you a salary. Oh, I'm not even gonna buy you a gallon of gas. So, you know, it's costing our volunteers to come in and volunteer. So, we're trying to increase that a little bit. We're not gonna hit that $10 range, but we're gonna try and increase that a little bit. The next thing we're looking at is, once again, we're gonna try and remodel the kitchen upstairs. I think Larry's gonna talk about that. And we're also looking to replace our 31-year-old fire truck that we take out on wildland fires. It almost didn't come back from a fire here a week ago, because it about went off a cliff with two people in it. Because the steering box fell out of it, and they lost all steering. Thankfully, they were able to pull it to the side, and we towed it back from Cleveland. So, we're very thankful. We believe in God, and thankfully, God believes in us. So, we're glad that they're home. So, that is another area of concern that we're trying to get in the budget and get replaced. We're looking at creative ways of maybe sharing that vehicle with Public Works, and trying to reduce that. We're willing to do whatever we can. We can't believe it's that difficult to replace something 31-years-old with something maybe a little newer. So, we're trying to get that in, in the budget as well. Those are pretty much the highlights. Oh, the one thing I can't budget yet for is what might happen with the EMS. So, I do have more information for the next council meeting to talk about that. But there will be some costs associated with that, and we're trying to, to deal with that as well.
I'm interested to know how a training officer could potentially help with retention of volunteers. What's the correlation?
Sure. So, right now, we don't have somebody that's dedicated to that position. They're not tracking the lifecycle of the volunteer and providing the training that they need next. We're just giving, these are our main classes, and we do, like, recruit class, and we do EMT. And we recruit, recruit class and EMT, and we hope you become a driver. So, so, that will help in offering more of a selection to help increase them in their knowledge. It will also help them, having that one individual to go to, instead of splitting that, but, between people faking that being the expert on the topic. Because when you're trying to juggle so many things, it's hard to specialize in anything. You're not a surgeon, you're a generalist. And this would help give us that focus that we need for, especially for these college kids coming in at 18 that, that really need a lot of help. Because they know everything, and we gotta get that out of it.
Well, and it seems like it would also make them feel valued.
So, this is a full-time position?
The, the training officer would be a full-time position.
So, but other than training, they're all obviously doing a lot.
So...
I mean, what else would they be doing?
They're 552, right?
So, they'd be a firefighter, they're an EMT, they'd respond on calls. They would probably, they would probably work from, my guess is noon to about 9:00 at night. So, that gives us some supervision, so that I get, I don't wanna say I wanna get more work out of the volunteers who are living there, but I'm getting more value of their time.
A quick question. How do you communicate that you need more volunteer firemen? Do you, you know, and the reason why I say that is that, this is my own, my own opinion, but it looks like it's kind of, I don't wanna say not approachable, but it's like it's a group of skilled people, and I'm not sure that, you know, if I was a citizen in the city, do I qualify? What's the process of even asking if I can be a part of this group? You know, so, how do you get the word out that you want?
So, we advertise in several job postings in town, at the university, Community College. We've put signs out in front of City Hall, where we're not conflicting with other things that need to go on there. We have a presence on the internet as well. It's on our website, word of mouth. We go to EMT classes, we go to fire science classes.
So, it's, okay.
We go to Welcome Back Bash. We're, we're right now desperate. If you're breathing, we're interested.
So, if you go from $2 to $10 per call, that'd be pretty easy to calculate, I'm guessing. You can find out how many calls, you could come up with a dollar amount on that?
Well, currently, we're spending about $70,000 on stipends.
For the $2 call?
$36,000 of that is for our lead resident, because they make $100 a shift.
Okay.
So, so, that, so that leaves us with about $34,000 split between the 40 members. We don't actually pay per call. That's just what it calculates to.
Oh, okay.
We pay, your shift went to 30 calls, and you made it to this percentage of those 30 calls, and 30 calls equaled $75 every month.
I got you.
So...
And this budget has additional $35,000 to be over what we've already passed in steps. So, we increased it by 10%.
So, you, okay.
So, we're making steps.
And the training officer is in the federal budget as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions for Chief?
One more thing I want to ask. Sorry, David. We do have money in his budget for a decent building study for the utility to hire someone like FCS, who, and now since they're better, that is people, and they're still, what are they expecting?
That's totally about my favorite.
Thank you. My department is not nearly as complicated as the past. I'm a department of one.
Oh, definitely. We're looking at...
Yes, I am the department.
All hands on deck here.
I direct myself. And when I came on here, I was brought into what would be a three-member department. We had a permit tech, and then the planning director. And that permit tech position went away in the middle of the recession. We had to lay off there. That position was partially funded through, it was kind of spread across three different departments, the Public Works, Community Development, and the Building Department, but it was supervised under the planning director at the time. In 2013, I believe it was, Capitola, the planning director retired. So, then, then it became a department of two, down to a department of one. And which was, you know, it was a, we were still in a time of recession. Time development was a lot slower. I was able to assist the building department a lot more in the permit data entry system indoor bias, assist with much more of the coordination of development reviews and so forth. So, things are starting to pick back up, just with building activity increasing, development activity being more on the positive side. And then with Mike's addition, his ambitions, I'm much more busier. We've added the, we have a historic preservation commission now, which I supervise. So, we're in the works on that. We just completed the certified local government approvals for that, for the historic preservation, we'll have a report at the next council meeting on that. So, we're, this proposal does include, consists of a one-time, a one-full-time employee for that permit tech position, which again, we're proposing would be spread across building, Public Works, and Engineering, that would be primarily supervised under, under my position. Some things that we're gonna be working on next year is the comprehensive plan. That's the, the budget of the amount for that has gone down from last year, which is kind of a carryover. Our consultant turned out to be a lot cheaper than we were predicting last year when we did our budget. So, that's, that's a relief there. It's still an expensive endeavor. It's still gonna require a lot of my time in preparation for, just in reviewing the proposals, and public clearings, and workshops, and getting the word out. So, I mean, that's really, those are the two biggest changes, or things that I'd like to highlight for my department. We don't put a lot of, my department doesn't put a lot of need into, you know, equipment and that sort of stuff. You know, we forget to get out, either borrow the Public Works vehicle, or I, the travel car works for us getting our own time visit sites. With that, I'll get us back on schedule so we can get out of here. Does anybody have any questions?
No pressure.
No tougher questions?
Questions for John. No pressure, Paul.
Is it me?
It's you.
Parks.
No, I don't get one, not even one question? Come on!
What's your favorite part of the job?
Oh, dealing with the public.
No way, no.
I, well, I mean, working with staff and council, and company commission, and historic preservation. It's great working here. I've been here 15 years, and I really enjoy it.
You're getting close to a celebration.
Well, apparently, since if you pass the tenure before we start handing out plaques and stuff, you know.
Now, you have to.
It's not like Subaru, where you get to add all the things.
We can pray you out of gold stars.
Parks should go pretty fast, probably faster than John's here. I guess I would highlight, one, we have one employee to do all our park work. Fortunately, we pushed off the Columbus Park bowling due to the school districts, so that gave a little bit better time for him. Again, understand... Again, understand that this employee is deaf, so, but...
You can save on ear protection that way, right?
Yeah. He is a good, hard worker. He is an excellent worker and sometimes there may be a little confusion with communication with people, but we work through that. So, Kenny is an excellent employee. I see three things that we need to buy that's going to cost some money. One is we need to upgrade our playground, fall protection, and Hardest Meadows and Lions Park. That's a special park that intertwines and interlaces that really is ADA accessible. So, that's probably five to six thousand dollars that needs to be spent just to bring those up to that elevation that we need. We don't, we need to improve the irrigation system at Lions Park. The difficulty is that to do that all at once is a significant amount. My intent would be to hire a designer that would design that system so that it can be installed, a little bit of time, okay? So, hopefully, next year, I can get the design completed and we'll start doing that. The other thing is, we're looking at the gas company, the gas company wants to move their regulating station down off of Twelfth Street, down to the end of Larch. The reason is that the regulating station they have now is not adequate for our community. And they placed a gas pipe, I mean, gas main, high-pressure gas main down a DRT right-of-way now right where Larch would intersect. They want to place their station there because they can tie into it for the lines. What we're looking at is requiring them to donate that property on Twelfth Street to the city and as well as donate some money that we can make some improvements in that area. And it would just be a nice place, people are walking, they can stop, they'll have benches or some facilities there and make it a nice area. So, that will, that one is the other part that we'll probably be working on this next year. Because I imagine they'll be coming to council in regards to an agreement to place the regulating station in Larch. You'd have to grant the approval for that. So, that's all I have for now.
Just a quick comment. My daughter's here visiting, she's been erased here and it's so nice going by Quonass Park and looking out there, looking at the wall and how the new place going and they know how. That is just such an improvement. It's just...
It's huge.
It is just so, it's pride in community, it's, it's just modernization and whatnot. It's just something that we're all, thank you very much for all you guys.
All your, all your... John did a lot of work on that. It's just, I can't think of...
Maybe very, very impressive.
The John part, yes. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, guys. Yeah, so, it just, so probably, we're hoping at the end of September, we'll have that. Yeah.
October twenty-second, which is a Sunday.
Which month?
October twenty-second. There'll be, the pickleball association's going to do, they're going to have members there to teach people how to play, extra paddle balls and stuff. Eleven to one, I think we're going to try to barbecue too and see. But one thing, in addition to park stuff that I might add, Paul, is that, well, there's the master plan that will be associated with the comprehensive plan of covered parks and identify possibly areas where we might have an expansion for our facilities because we are out of depth. We're basically at a standstill. We need a little bit more park ground in order for development to continue. But also in terms of improvements, we're working with Fish and Wildlife, the Tri-State Steel headers, and Anderson Perez, the engineering firm on board, for dredging the lion's pond because of the sediment that's filled in in that area. So, that's something that, at least from a planning standpoint, we're going to be spending some money next year on that to get ready for applications for some grants through our CIO.
It's actually, it's more than that. It's separating the pond from the grid. Because we can't dredge now without separating the pond.
Well, and it is...
And then it's also going to take care of the stormwater that comes off of the Arizona Heights and take it out of the pond or go through a treatment process prior to the other street.
That'll be true.
So, those are, those are big dollars that we've got. For the background, yeah. Street fund.
This is actually the first year that the engineering department of one, I guess, whatever the term that is. Yeah, it has been actually in the budget process, so that's why you have some zeros and all the two, three this year and then that is why there's numbers this year. Really, most of it was basically just built through the last, the last, the last, so a little bit of training, some equipment and so forth. My role here for the most part, in the next, when I originally came on, a little over ten years ago, and that's mostly as a technical consultant to the rest of the staff, so that means a lot of work with Paul, with John, with Mike, and to some extent, a little bit of finance, we look back and forth. And so, I've been trying to maintain that kind of, that kind of role and it really ends up being kind of a struggle in terms of development to meet the standards, this work and all, so we'll get, including all the plans that come through, developments and plans and so forth. And then on the other side is the longer-term planning role in that technical area. So, that's going to continue. I expect it's going to get probably a little bit more busy. It's going to become more busy. We have about two, two of our three walls are climbing south and so we're going to do a couple of big projects, project management, a lot of that, shared with Paul. And in addition to that, we have a couple of big grants coming up for Fourth Street and Academy Way, we'll hopefully get money for that, we'll see. That's in design right now. Most of these projects are, probably have a three- or four-year life from funding all the way through construction. So, we will see a lot of new, just kind of a continuation of track cars, it's still being, it's still being pieces, as it were, in terms of that project as well and Paul's working on that too. The, this next year, we'll probably, I expect, in two thousand eighteen, probably have an intern again for six to eight weeks. So, we'll be a little bit of funds there, it's not a perfect period. I think it is similar, so, but... It is, yeah, it's going to show. So, that's, that's good. And some of the emphasis there, management GIS and some of that data structures and so forth, trying to get involved in that, make sure that we have loopholes so that things are simplified and they're clear and it doesn't cause a lot of effort in terms of trying to pull information out and make decisions or let people ask questions. So, it's probably that. But probably the big news is the stormwater utility that's coming up. And so, we don't have numbers for that yet, in fact, parameters, we have a contract, if you recall, we put a contract for this study. And that's, that's commencing and I really wouldn't say it's begun, at least yet, they're still working on building some site reconnaissance and we'll call on that. But the idea was to come up with a rate study and we really have some numbers for you by the end of next year. And we should know more than as to what is required, it's really too far to that. There's the personnel side in terms of managing that process, there's also the capital facilities to collect the water tree over the sturdy back of the creeks. To give you an idea, and I think this is probably quite a bit higher than we should expect, the city wall wall uses about, they had three options, they published a report a couple of years ago, and this year, they're projecting to come one point down to two-point three million dollars for their storm utility. It's a lot. Divide that by three, you end up about six fifty, seven, eight thousand, maybe a little bit more depending on your approach. They're looking at to nine people, just out that, between seven and nine. I'm thinking, and I don't know, we have to go through the process yet, that we're probably looking like not just a third, but maybe a third of that even, or maybe getting by with thirty million dollars. But this is a utility, which they actively raise associated with that, with the whole process of determining, what size, whether it's contributing to the facilities, it's fairly complex, fairly involved. But hopefully by the beginning of next year, we'll be able to make a picture ahead and hopefully we can ramp that up so we're not like hit for the night with everything on at the same time. There's also some new technologies, Paul and I have talked just briefly about, that may be really a wonderful solution and may be able to cut our costs substantially in capital side. So, along with that, and I've talked with Mike about this too, that utility, I expect we'll probably bring on probably a couple more employees, one of which I'd like to see take more of the burden of the volume side because stormwater is very closely related to that. That would free me from all of this strategic planning effort on the streets and the water reservoir and some of the other bigger picture stuff. So, that's, that's kind of it. Are there any questions or...
Generally, when you form a stormwater utility, it also takes on equipment and takes on personnel. So, you'd end up with a sweeper and the employee that operates that sweeper would come all under that, would take it out of the burden of the, of the city department. The actor, out portion possibly, it's covered by waste water, so. So, you'll get more coverage by a utility, less, less burden on CD.
Burden exists. And I would, we should probably expect that there will be a pretty significant public outreach component as well, which is actually probably going to be good for us, but a big part of stormwater is training people to change some of how they're doing things. So, that's something that we should be expecting as well.
Quick question. I suppose you found like five hundred thousand dollars lying around, like, did we used to like reconstruct Broadway yet? Like maybe fallen behind a cabin or something? Ah, I forgot we had this, no?
I think, was this, wasn't that under streets?
Streets. Something.
No, I, no, I haven't found extra five hundred thousand lying around, but if you find it, let me know.
Maybe you'll get it for your money.
I think, yeah, I just don't know. I'm curious though, because I noticed like last week on the north side of Twelfth, that there was some work on Broadway there behind Andy's. What was that about?
I'll be talking about it.
Oh, okay.
That's not good.
Oh, okay.
Kind of opposite, the two walls we've lost, I was just, the other, I was thinking about this the other day, how long will the lifespan on those wells approximately? Pretty weird. So, from the, from drilling to failure, about eight years?
Eighty.
I'm sorry.
Seventy to eighty.
Eighty years?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because I was trying to do the math in my head for a bond issue that would cover a new well, is a, is a bond issue, you know, run up for the, so those wells are really old. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Well, some of those were before the city system. Both of those were before the city.
I did not, okay.
Yes, about thirty wells and there's maintenance and stuff.
The well, the actual hole.
Wow, okay, okay. Thank you.
So, now... Streets? Okay. Mike probably realizes this more than anybody, although maybe, maybe all of you do. Street, there's probably the one that lacks the employees the most. So, he asks to do something, we start on it and then we have to stop because we get pulled out. This is where people don't realize Public Works and the breadth of the work that they have to do and the limited, the limited employees that we have. But I'm not, I'm only asking for one employee, I mean, I got one employee this year, which will help, but it takes a little bit of time to train those people. Not said on that. Streets, what we've done, we're moving toward a crack seal, I mean, a chip sealing program and then a skin, what we call skin patching program. What you've seen this year, we've run out of time because we don't have any time and you need to understand, for doing roadwork, we don't have thirty-five thousand dollars. That's it. For doing asphalt work or patching and that's, that's, that's the amount of money that we have to do work. That doesn't get you very far. What we were able to do so far with our time is we've skin patched a little bit of ale, we've skin patched behind Andy's Market. Where else do we do that?
Birch and eleven.
Birch and eleven. So, both, birchs from second to third and then birchs down from the creek south to eleven street and so forth. That's the, that's the amount of skin patching that we've done. Makes a big improvement, doesn't last, I mean, it'll last, it'll last several years. It's not, but it's not like a pay for a job. We want to do some more of that next year, but the big, the big thing we've got is chip sealing right now and people don't like it, but that's, you get the life. You add seven to ten years of life on the street with a chip seal. So, and we've put on several, several thousand feet of chip sealing in the last four or five years. So, we'll continue that program right now. We're looking at the county doing that for us again. We're looking at Highland Park and Davenport Drive, B Street and A Street. That's more than, I don't know that we'll get all those done because I also want to and we need to do it next year, to seal the bike path from College Avenue to Academy Way. That's the oldest part of bikes, bike path and it needs to be sealed.
And the chip seals, what you did out of the one, that's a factory that's been doing that.
Otherwise, we'd worry about making this thing. The next thing we're trying to do is get these signals up to standard code to where Wash Dock will take care of them and go away from us in terms of hearing and they'll handle them. They do it on a regular basis, they're trained for it and we just don't do it often enough so we don't touch them, either than maybe for a switch to put them on flashing ready and change those.
Just to correct your, this information, I think a little initial chip, chip sealing actually what someone gave, and just bragged about the chip sealing.
Really? That's nice. It's good to hear that because usually, I had one person, uh, when are you going to finish this? And, you know, I suppose, but again, it's all on money. Walla Wama does a chip seal and then they coat it and so you don't have that loose rock. And then, but that's just more money and this is, it's hard.
What are the plans for the lines across, we're at Ball University, the student crossing? Is it, though, they're off in the summer?
They're not off in the summer, it's just nobody's crossed.
No one's, is, are there, this has come up in conversation, and I don't have some a lot of time on this right now, but as far as the practicality of them and how they're set up, is there, and what I mean by that is, you know, we've talked about those, you know, the point of, but it, they either don't hit the button or they walk across or they hit the button and no one, I mean, it's, it seems to be, in retrospect, it seems like, when I look at what Women has across compared to what we've got there, of course, it's not as pretty and whatnot, but it just seems like they're, they're hitting the button, it's a flashing light, it just seems to be a really odd situation.
In hindsight, I wish we wanted to put it in. I think we'd be better off if we never even had lines there and let the kids take their chances. At least then they would. And right now, there's two, two problems. One, they push the button and walk rather than push the button, wait for the walk sign. And the other problem is, drivers are so used to seeing kids there, they'll stop without the kids pushing buttons and then, and wait for them to cross.
I think my question actually, after my, yeah, drumming on here, was, is there a way to, is there a way to reprogram those to go to immediate red flashing if they hit the button or...
It does go to immediate red flashing.
No, no, no.
Yellow, yellow sign. No, because that, that would not be safe. You need that caution to get the drivers to slow down and prepare for, for that to turn red.
So, could you just go to flashing yellow?
I, no, I don't think you can do it now, I wouldn't find out, but...
Unfortunately, I'm reasonably certain that the one they have at Whitman no longer meets the code.
No, they just installed it. If you go in...
On the New Orleans Street? Oh, I haven't been down the New Orleans Street. The one they have before didn't really meet the code.
But that's all.
It's similar to the one on Rose Street, that they just kind of like write yellow, twinkle, twinkle, twinkle.
All I was just wondering is if there's any way to tweak it, you know, we have, it's beautiful.
The best way to get it to work, I mean, it's, no, no, is to have police get there and get some tickets going.
Hey, please, somebody needs some revenue.
For, for, well, there's not much revenue in tickets. For, for, well, there's not much revenue in tickets, but there needs to be citations for drivers that stop without the signals, and citations for kids that go.
So I don't know if there's a way.
If I'm behind them and they stop when the light's on, I honk at them.
I do too.
So I wonder if there's any way to look at the program and to see if they can go to an automatic, a yellow flashing and that's it, in the story. No delay, delay, delay.
We'll check.
Yeah, okay.
I've seen, I actually saw these in Boise, Idaho, in, in Bullman, in, in a really strange and mutual place in Bullman. I saw, oh, I think I saw three or four of them, because of state. And it looked like they'd been there for a while, and it seemed, they seemed to work. So this, this may be a training issue.
And a comfort issue. And it may be the fact that we've been with the flashers for so long that people are used to that.
So, so, I mean, I, I think we can take a look at that, but I'm, this is probably.
It is a frustration. My wife doesn't want me to walk again, College Avenue now, because students are here and I start yelling.
Somebody in your wellness program.
Anger management.
One thing I wanted to mention about this street fund is that right now it has a $118,000 deficit, and that's just for operations, that's not funding capital, it's all capitals for new, just to improve. Um, and even that's going to need a $50,000 transfer fund for these streets, so just making sure of how your, your.
I just had someone to add on that, and I don't have the information directly in front of me, but if you recall, was it, at initial, since 2005, we also all looked at funding for streets. Um, that is kind of been working its way through our system. And our roads, you know, we, we live with College Avenue, in fact, it's been 70 years, it's kind of like our wells, so we extend those lives, the life of those streets quite a bit. Now, that, that impact of that, the funding has been hitting our local streets, and a lot of the local streets that were new at the times that happened are also getting old now. So that's accelerating, and we have less and less money, and, oh, I should say, more and more streets going back more quickly now, because we're not going back and fixing them as fast as we can. Now, the chip seal helps, um, and I, I guess, rough numbers, the lifecycle for our streets is if we could let them last 200 years, we'd be fine. Okay, so that's kind of where we're at. Um, it's probably not quite that bad, we can probably do something else, and using some different kinds of processes, but just to add to what you're hearing about the street fund, it's not going to get better, and in fact, as we've been, let's stormwater study, there are some possibilities of going in different sections for stormwater, which may be cheaper. And we may be actually be able to charge a stormwater utility, not just for streets moving, which is part of the stormwater utility, but maybe for also some of the facilities that lie within Whitewood. So just want to kind of give you a heads up that we're going to try to be a little creative as we look at that, and kind of keep you, give you a heads up.
What can I add, can I add one more of it? The, the thing to remember right now, the other thing is, you don't get funding for local roads.
Right.
So, so, you know, to address your deal, Broadway, good luck. Uh, you know, the portion, the, the possibilities that you have, uh, is the skin patch, that would be a big help, but you, you, LIDs, and we're, we're, if, if you qualify property owners, they, that front that street, pay that bill, or that area.
Or, or as we dig deeper in budgets, if streets are above all as a priority, we want about new options with the transportation benefit this, or not, yeah.
So we, we have options.
We do have to make up the money, we need $2,000 somehow, though, and, um, because the street, the streets line item budgets are already, there, there is no, there's nothing more we can pack, so either that's going to come on CD or we have to figure out some other means.
We have, we have more work.
So what? We added a new employee this year, we'll get him up to speed. Uh, what I've told Mike recently, and, and I'll, I'll let you know, in preparation, I'm not planning on retiring now, but in preparation, I want to do a brain dump. Okay? And what I do, I did it, uh, three or four years ago, is I take a portion of a morning, a morning every week, and I go through from one end of the city to the other side, and I tell them where everything is, what they are, all the nuances that are in there, and I'm going to do it, do it again this year to get the, all the employees refreshed and familiar with it. Uh, what I'm thinking is I may record it to, so that, that we can, so that it would be in there, but I want to do, start doing that in preparation. Uh, if we can get a GIS person, then I can brain dump into them and tell them where everything is, what the, what the quirks are in the, in, under the roads. Uh, because I know where everything is, and I know what's there. I was surprised the other night, the other day, I went to a sewer inspection, and I, we don't have any clay names, I thought. We do now, ain't each clay name? And, uh, so, but, so I didn't know everything, but that's what I want to do, because I want to brain dump, uh, somehow to get this out and get it into usable, uh, format before I'm gone, so, uh, that's, that's a goal. What, what that has to do with water, I don't know. Uh, so, I want to, I would like to go into a full radio read system, now whether that's a drive around, or whether that's from a point source that, that they can, uh, the front office can type in the, the address that they need a reading on, and it'll just go from our tower, or something, give a reading. Either one, ideally, the point source would be best, and that's what we'll point toward. But we have over a third of our, our radio, our meters, our services are radio read, another third is touch read, and the rest are old Neptune meters, uh, that are over 25 years old, but are still operating, and, and just so you know, we, we have less than 3% loss, water loss. So we're, we're, we're keeping track of our water. So having that old of a meter and still getting a good read is, is impressive, uh, and that's nothing to do with me. Uh, the, uh, we have not been able to stick with work as, as crews on water. I've had this in my list for I don't know how many years. I want to change the water services on Belroy and Alden, their PVC and they, they break. Uh, I've had this for years, but I can't send a crew out, stay on the job, without pulling them off, and, and so I've just kind of bagged that, because I, my guys get pulled in so many directions. Uh, I would like to be able to set a crew and say, say, stay on it, uh, it's been difficult. Uh, so if we can get through it, we'll get through it, but that would be a difficult. Obviously, if we can get funding on C Street or 4th Street, we'll be busy, we'll be busy. Well, number one, well, number two is what we want to replace. Uh, well, number two is one that is lifting, uh, the foundation is lifting, uh, and, so it's operating now, but we never know when it could break loose. We're going to have to shut it down and raise the column, and raise the, the pump train, and, and it's pretty gappy, and make it level again. Uh, we've put it on about 18 inches, so it's, it's going up quite a bit. Uh, right now, we anticipate the gap well, we'll probably relocate, relocate it down to our city property on Maple, across from our reservoirs, that's, it's not determined, but that's the most reasonable spot right now. Uh, I don't think we're looking at any redeveloped resources in the water.
That one.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Uh, so.
So.
We're, we're, it's ma, we're maintenance, that, that's right, we are, yeah. Uh, and, and it's usually individual, it's not a group.
So just to clarify, you, you do have four now, because on the bottom of page three, it says three full-time employees, and then you have four names. And on page one, it says four.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure it's four.
Actually, we, I, I don't think Wade's paid totally out of water, really.
Everybody's paid, we have one, and not so many.
Either Wade?
Oh, no. Correct, just got the two up.
So, so the three employees are the last three, Travis, Randy, and Kevin. Wade is partly funding through water, partly, uh, streets, partly in, uh, wastewater, is a different part, and parks.
But it does say four FTE at the top.
Okay. I don't know what.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify.
An FTE isn't a person, no, no, it's ours, so.
Right, but.
Probably.
Yeah. He probably got four.
Wade was incredibly helpful. My engineering students did a project on Fourth Street, and he was just amazingly helpful, so, just want to get that on the record.
Speaking of water, once it's used, it goes to wastewater.
Wastewater, I, I'm happy with contracting out of wastewater. It's a well that we really do, is, is, they're, they're professional, they, they do it, and they, they keep us informed. Again, if you didn't, if you don't remember, we got a $150,000 rebate for, for this year. Uh, so, and that, that is paying for, uh, the tree removal, uh, so that's the big project for, for me, is the tree removal, public tree removal, and getting that ready for farm ground, and hopefully turning it over to CH2M, and Anderson Farm, uh, and, and definitely, that's going to be put on and so forth. The other big thing is to complete the, uh, facility plan amendment, that gives us just the guideline to get into the details, uh, and what we need to build. And so, uh, after this, there will be another contract, uh, for the tree removal construction. Uh, that will be, will, will, will be soon on the end of this part. Uh, the big things, and we'll have a color works committee tomorrow to talk about wastewater as well, and, and some of the requirements that we, we could be close to. Uh, we did a, a sewer lining project in, in a backyard, about 400 feet, I think it was, uh, at, at the line, that house about flooded probably four times in the last three or four years, uh, and, uh, it's now smooth, clean, uh, it stops groundwater infiltration, the, the roots are gone, uh, takes probably, will take care of that problem, and I, I had requested $50,000 budget, it was, it was between 15 and 20. Uh, so, we're going to, uh, I want to start trying to put in money into the collection system on alleys and backyards and our trucking spots, and, uh, the only folk, only, I shouldn't say only, but primarily focused on wastewater treatment plants at the detriment of the collection system. And the collection system is what adds the flow to plants, and so it's really important to be thinking about. So I think we'll try to start doing the lining program and, uh, see what we can do. That, that to me is the big.
Is that why, is that why you know new technology?
Uh, no, it's, it's been in place for quite a while. There's different technologies.
Yeah.
This, this firm is local, but Tri-City's.
We used it very effectively at the Hamford site back in the 90s, and I sort of freaked out today when I read the newspaper, 1980, nearly 40 years ago. Um, so, but yeah.
And matter of fact, uh, the university had a major sewer plug in the lateral, it wasn't alumni, just before Alumni Weekend, and, uh, they had to replace some of that main line, did that, they're, they're lined that, uh, that uses this sewer.
It works really, really well. It's like the closest thing to magic when it comes to sewers that you've ever seen. I could go on about it for 45 minutes if you'd like, I have a whole lecture.
One part of the cars project included a lining of sewer main from Sunny Drive down to 12th Street.
So if you want to read something interesting, go on the New York Times and look up 160-ton garbage plug under the City of London.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, uh, the workers, they have to go down by hand with shovel and hoses to, um, it's, it's a, it's a plug of garbage, 160 tons.
They call them fat birgs.
Yeah, and the only way you can get, get them out is by hand.
Public service announcement, do not ever pour your oil or grease or whatever down the drain, and in your trash can.
It's a, yeah, it's a, yeah, 160 ton.
It's called fog, it's called fog.
Fog.
That's oil and grease.
And other things.
Last.
Well, they have, their sewers are giant.
You put them in.
They're like streams.
Yeah, we have 84, 84 right now, 84 pieces of equipment. The oldest piece of equipment is 1976 grader, that was, uh, not asking for a new grader.
His new letters standard.
It's only 40 years. So, we're looking at replacing the dump truck, uh, actually, probably, possibly, probably two, but right now, one, one to replace our little 1988 dump truck, and then, but I'm not going to replace it with new. I'm sending my fleet manager to Seattle, maybe in the next week, to a company that gets used, and we've seen some of the pictures of him, we want him to evaluate, that it'll be the same size, we really want the smaller dump truck, and, and we'll purchase one there, we'll give our old one to the wastewater plant for right now, and if it makes it for a while, great, if not, then we'll have to replace the one that we lost there. Uh, we're looking at, at a pay, the replacement of paver and the, the spray trailer, but, uh, we want to update the equipment, uh, replacement list and get it on, on grade. So we have 84 pieces of equipment that's maintained by one person. Uh, and it is difficult to keep up. Now, I will say we're, uh, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we're going to, and you correctly gave it, if we're going to do mow, we're going to do mow, we need to deal with the brush trucks. They're, they're really old, uh, they're not dependable at all. I think everybody will agree with that. And if we're, if we're going to, we're going to continue on mow, and there's purpose for mow, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing against that, what I'm saying, if we're going to continue, we need, we need funding, and we need to, we need to replace those rigs, uh, or at least one rig, and, and, it is for the better.
We've been discussing several options, a joint use, where it's, it's a roll-on, roll-off of what happened with the unit for wildfire fighting, and in the wintertime, it can be used in this space of, of.
Yeah, the last thing, if, if we could find something that would work in that, that, that type of thing, that it would go nicely because of the fact that the use would be, uh, they needed it summer, we wouldn't, and, uh, winter, uh, we would need it winter.
The logic behind this, as Dave has described, we work on all the jobs. And, uh, having a truck that sends you over the edge of a cliff, it's probably not a new incentive to, to deal with that, and so we really want to have some kind of improved brush truck for the, probably not a $200,000 brush truck, but something that you do, you do, you need to deal with that. Probably prior to the fire season.
Right now, in this public, I have $3,000 flooding in or something, while we don't know it until the last, you know, it's, it's.
And, and we, we can, we can maneuver, I don't, I don't mean that in a negative way, but we can, we can delay some purchases that, that add. but we can, we can delay some purchases that, uh, add some money to that, I feel, uh, so that, that we can, we can work, try to work something out.
So, that's, that's kind of the review of where we are this year. Oh, it's not on here.
Thank you, man. I apologize, I'm starting to lose my voice this afternoon, so, uh, if you need something restated, please do. Uh, not a lot of excitement in my line items, uh, most of it is status quo. Uh, we've spent a lot of money in 17 in terms of upgrades to our infrastructure here in the city, and, um, 18 will involve some expenditure too, but not to the degree of 17. Uh, we're going to make some major changes in the kitchen and the fire department, both kitchens, actually, and, um, we've got some more HVAC issues as far as in public works areas, but, um, the expenditure will be way down in terms of facilities for, given that we have no major failure, that, that one of the big problems that we've had in the city is, most of the time, we've been budgeted in such a way that we were pushing everything to failure, and it was hard to be proactive with the money allotted, um, to keep things really in peak working order, or at peak efficiencies for that matter. Um, we are continually looking at ways to save electricity, so on replacement, we always go to a more efficient option in terms of lighting or motors or anything. But, um, that's still been kind of a piecemeal thing. We haven't had the money to globally go in and just say, well, we're going to do all LED lighting, you know, the way we might want to in terms of cutting those utility costs. But, um, and we're always looking at incentives, um, from the power companies and the utility companies, be it, be it gas or electricity, but often, they are also tied to job creation, and so, you have to use their contractors, and you have to use their listed products. And that's been one, one problem with switching lining over, is that they would specify a particular model of a ballast or whatever, and that costs three times more than what I can buy it on the open market, and still have a high efficiency ballast. So, you're always walking that tightrope of what's really best, or what's the stewardship for the city versus accepting this, what looks good as free money, um, but on the back end, you're paying more. Building-wise, it's explosive right now, and, um, the nice thing about building in terms of budgeting is that it's basically pass-through. You can, if you need to hire on contract help for inspection, you can do that based on the activity level. Um, I can't praise enough my building inspector that I have, Scott Hall, right now, he is the best I've ever had, and, um, he is just a, a total profession in all areas, so, um, we're doing very well with it, but it's conceivable with the level of activity that we have right now, that, uh, next year, we might have to bring someone on, but I think we could probably do that on a contract basis, that's still to be explored. Um, but the activity is very high, and it looks to be, um, some more commercial projects in the near future, um, which will make it even more difficult to stay on top of everything, because as long as we have land to build houses on, they seem to be able to sell. We're really, we're really, um, doing a lot of residential, so, and we're having some new land open up, so that may make that even more challenging. Um, the IT side, I've dropped off a lot. I have, I answer emergencies, or if someone just has a little problem in the house here somewhere, but most of that stuff is going to the contractor now. Um, I still do some of the purchasing and that kind of thing, but, um, the rest of it, I just do only on, on an emergency, because they're here typically, you know, anywhere between four and 12 hours a week, depending upon the week, and sometimes not even that. A lot of them need something that's relatively small, and so it's easier just to grab or call their, you know. But, um, the, most of stuff, we're trying to push towards their help desk, and, um, we're also working on some remote capabilities where hopefully they'll be able to handle some stuff more in terms of remotely, because they, um, they aren't here. Um, I don't know if there's any questions about any specific areas of this discipline, I'm trying to think if I'm telling you the whole story. I've, um, been very tight on time, um, this year myself. I didn't get in the, um, the, um, budget narrative, that's why you don't see it there, but I will have it in there before the final, or hopefully sooner than before the final. I'm sure Sarah wants it yesterday. Um, but there's not a lot of changes from our goals, um, what we're trying to do, we're continually striving for more efficient options. Um, we went through a, I would call it a class, uh, this last week in the afternoons, uh, it's called Lean Program out of the, um, finance or auditing section of the state, and, um, that was very helpful, pointed us in some new directions. She, um, felt that what we were doing was very good, but, um, I think it will be helpful in the long run to incorporate, um, some of her methodology, or not her methodology, but the methodology of what she is teaching me. So.
Have you given me any possible job ideas?
Can I answer any?
So, you've got kind of the overall picture of where you are, you're still in the process, your goal is to come up with, uh, you have, you have about 100% expense. You think, uh, you think, uh, more, you think you're doing that as, as, uh, you're looking through some, uh, particularly around the streets? Um, as, as Paul noted, you know, his guys were either delayed by weather, uh, or, or just running out of altitude airspeed and money. Uh, skip patching streets, continue, yeah.
I just want to say how great it is to kind of hear from all the department heads what their concerns and needs are in terms of the budget. I think it's really excellent information. Thank you for everyone that's worked so hard to bring some information to us and solving the difficulty.
You know, I'm optimistic, we talked about shortfall at the beginning, but as we've gone through this session, and we've seen where we've added expenses also to this, as far as some FD increases, I, I, I feel, you know, I understand we're not there, but, uh, to hear that shortfall, but then also to see where we improve things and add an expense, I, I'm optimistic, you know, I would have.
So, are we, I, the whole purpose of this is to feel that, the understanding of where we are. I mean, we are dramatically understaffed, and it's only because of the hard work of the people that you see sitting around the table here, that the city works as well as it does. We have, we have work to do, you know, it's kind of polished for growth, but it looks like we may have a fairly large apartment complex going in, however, we're, we're, there's been some expression of interest about new blocks of, across the street from the school. Certainly, most of that's going to need, also, a truck development, and as we kind of continue to look at this, I think we're moving more towards, and we're still nice, uh, and we still have, uh, we got, we have a request from Uncle Ben, they want to put on a fall festival, uh, and a three-hour business uses focus, and, um, things are happening, I don't think so, things are, you have a bunch of farmers, you need, you need, you need veggies, there's been, there's been consistent seller vendors there, and we have an, we have a quality wise, and.
Yeah, they are really unfortunate. We need to buy any contest, or like, or something like that.
I had a, so, I had a one-man pie, you know, I lost. Uh, the, who's, who's our golden rule, you know, is to do well, we've got some family working, but.
Well, and I continue to be amazed at how much we get done with how little, and I really appreciate everybody coming, taking their evening to come and help us, um, because these workshops, and I feel bad about the canceled one, but the, these workshops really do help, um, when it comes time to do the actual voting.
Well, it's our observation, if you were making decisions in the dark, that's, that's kind of the way we're on the road.
Exactly.
Thank you for the sunshine.
And, and so, we, we, we think it's important to understand, so we start, and we start trying to say, okay, here's how we're going to do this, it's understanding how the office, what care we're trying to do. I already mentioned the, the lean trading from the State Office, we'd be bringing them back.